... to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
... was called order, recalling Anthony O'Callaghan.
... Earl, Ewing, Harden, Knox. Knox?
Here.
Miller?
Here.
Zimmerman?
Here.
Then at the previous meeting where we had approved...
I have correction. May it says in here two times that I abstained and I absolutely didn't abstain.
Under oath, man.
Two sets of minutes. One was from the public hearing and one was from the council meeting. So I typed abstain because in mine it says either yes, no, or abstain, but I can change it.
Yeah, I was told I couldn't abstain. I had to recuse myself, remember? Which I've so wanted to vote, but...
I mean, you could put, if you want to put recuse opposed to abstain, you should let it...
Okay.
That's it.
And recuse opposed to no, I mean, recuse without its own definition, I mean, would go with abstaining for it.
I mean, I see no difference between the two, to be quite honest.
Well, we were, your office told us one time that we are elected into office and we are to vote and we're not supposed to abstain.
Unless it's supposed to be a fact, factually.
Yeah.
Is this...
Is that right, Mike?
I typed abstain just because of the rules that it has for mine, it says it's either yes, no, or abstain, but, so that's why it was abstain. Right?
Go ahead.
Okay. Tilt the office.
One million, six hundred and fifty-nine thousand, six hundred and eighty-seven dollars and thirty-two cents in all funds, three hundred and forty thousand, nine hundred and seventy-two dollars and sixty-eight cents in the general fund.
Any additions?
No additions.
Bill Murray, resolution seventeen, dash, seven, dash, one was stopped from motion by...
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Ewing?
Yes.
Harden?
Yes.
Knox?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Okay. Yes, go to committee reports. Kelly?
For most of June, as many of you know, I was in, you got to Africa on a church missions trip, that's why I missed the June council meeting. Upon my return, I checked with the sheriff's office and there were no major incidents in the village during my absence. Perhaps I should go away more often. Because on my first day back in uniform, which was Saturday, July the eighth, about 5:40 PM, I responded to a call at 200 Karen Street in reference to an unresponsive female. Upon my arrival, I found thirty-five-year-old Erin Mulcahy deceased in the apartment where she resided. Decided to contact the Auglares County Sheriff's Office and the Ohio Bureau of Criminal Investigations to assist in this incident. Together, we're working on this incident to determine the cause of death. Autopsy results are not yet available and due to the nature of the incident, I'm unable to release any additional information at this time. I do want to say that both the sheriff's office detectives and BCI have been very good to work with. That's all I have at this time.
Commissioner wanted to say that, you know, we, in the signing contract that the Clean Ohio grant, have sent that back, we're waiting for their response, which will allow us to move forward with the park conditions and so we will be getting that sometime, I don't know how soon that will turn around, to start that, looking as far as design and moving forward. Also, we received a, another grant which we have been laboring, that was through OTWC this month also. And that is called the Project North Street Reconstruction. It's a paving contract, or the paving grant we got for, that we applied for last year. It's a eighty thousand dollar grant with ten thousand matching funds and, which we approved last year, I think it was, but I need to do a resolution basically accepting that. And so I know there's a, the Clean Ohio resolution is in new business and type B, so I didn't know if you wanted to do those two resolutions.
Yeah, while we're talking about it, let's go over them. Does everybody understand the paving grant, that's how that works, what we was able to accomplish, if you remember?
That is where we, last year, we applied for a grant through the engineer's office, through the commissioners and it was a seventy thousand dollar grant with ten thousand matching, which was just eighty thousand dollars for the paving. And that was released, would be released anytime, sometime after July four, and I think we have two years to do that. And that's based on identified streets that we applied in that grant for. So we just need to do a resolution because we have already received that and that's now it's just to receive it. And that's the same way with the Clean Ohio, we just need to do a resolution. I think I'd say it here and be, better than wanting to get one ahead of the other.
Right.
So, um...
Let's go ahead.
The, one for the paving, so that one's done. Then we'll address the other one.
Did you pick the streets?
Yeah, we had to designate certain streets when we applied. So what we did, we went around and looked at what we thought heated at the worst at the time. And so we're not allowed to deviate from what they granted before.
People ask what we're gonna do, I mean, I have no idea what to tell them.
What will be is, what will happen is, we'll have to put together a booklet of standards for them to bid, because it's a grant, they'll have to bid it. And so we won't be able to know how much we're gonna get done until the quotes come in. So what we'll do is tell all the bid applicants, you know, here's how many feet or the streets we have, they'll, they'll do an estimate of what they can do. So then, from that pool of streets, we'll determine what gets paved. And that's how it's been in the past too, is just, but if we can't deviate from what streets are on the list.
I had a guy ask me, along those lines, a guy asked me kind of an interesting question the other day that I had no idea. He said, "You guys are always passing these things, getting these grants and putting up these matching funds and you're borrowing the money from this bank that you do it all the time?" And I said, "Well, I know they mentioned that last night, but I wonder just where we stand on how much money we owe out there after all these grants of like South Westminster Street and Northwestminster and..."
This, this particular grant here isn't borrowed on the town board general fund, we appropriated from last year.
Oh, my goodness.
Yeah, the street money. This isn't borrowed money for our matching, this was...
But they were just wondering how much borrowed money were responsible for our matches. You could probably dig in there and find it, but I don't...
Well, the thing is, on finances, it gets a little tricky knowing when, how, and where. Let's say on the park project, I think we've already determined that the payment on that loan, we're going to be, it comes out kind of like a wash. When we transferred all our funds from Fifth Third, they were not paying us any interest, we were paying surcharge for them to take care of our money. We moved everything to Osconville Bank, where they do pay a dividend each year, or it's monthly, I guess.
Monthly.
Okay. So what happens is money that we weren't getting, now we are, so that is what we kind of looked at, well, that'll cover that, that loan. So we're actually, it's kind of comes out of wash. Now, not all of them are that way, but what we try to do is work within our budget that we have each year to spend for whatever category that it's in. Well, we know we've only got this much each year, so we can't spend more than we have. So that, that's kind of the way we work it.
Yeah, I didn't know how to answer the question because I have no idea what's out there.
But it, it works like any, any of your home finances, A, and how if you look at what you've got coming in per year and how much you think you can put out, and that's how you calculate it. You know, you may be driving Chevy instead of Cadillac, but we're living in a fifty thousand dollar home instead of five hundred thousand dollar home. It's all how...
So in other words, we're not in bad shape yet, we're not ready to go bankrupt?
Well, I just wanted, I just wanted to say, each time we do a grant application, we explain to council where our matching's gonna come from at that time.
Right, that's what brought this question.
So that's why we do identify that, we explain to, and then we show it in the appropriations. But to give you an example, if you look at our line item, it says one point six million dollars. I think that's higher than it was when we started the year, wasn't it, Joe, because we've been usually running about one point five.
Right.
So even with our obligations, our reserves are actually growing. So we are...
Well, most of our loans too are through the OTWC, which are zero percent loans for twenty years, and then we pay in July, or June, and then December. And so we have it billed in, so when we get money in, it goes to another fund where it's held, and then we make those payments. So we're, it's all accounted for, I mean, it's all...
Well, they were just kind of concerned that, you know, we invite our kids and grandkids, you'll be making payments that we're borrowing money on.
Well, we're, we're actually taking in more and utilizing more than we ever did before, and that's what enables us to be able to keep moving forward.
But that doesn't mean we're not watching that continually saying, we've talked, matter of fact, we've talked about that recently, we've...
Most of our loans are gonna be paid off in the 2020s. Sounds forever away, but it's not.
Well, just tell them to watch YouTube and get their answer, because I sure can't remember everything you just told me.
The general fund matching.
Okay, well, thank you.
So did you, so did you want to move on that resolution?
You want to do B first, before you do A then?
Yeah. Which one do you have?
I think we start with the one that's the sample in the backpack, which is the north...
That's the street baby?
The north, yeah, the paving street, or third street reconstruction.
So you, you want to make that?
That'll be seventeen, dash, seven, dash, two.
So one, this one paper, we're changing the tree then, huh? The clean diagram?
Yes. I didn't know yet, too.
Okay, I'll make a motion to adopt resolution seventeen, dash, seven, dash, two for the North Third Street reconstruction with the city match of two thousand dollars for the grant fund.
Second.
Miller?
Yes.
Knox?
Yes.
Earl?
Yes.
Ewing?
Yes.
Harden?
Still don't understand it, but yes. This first line here threw me, sample resolution.
That's a sample from the OPWC that they gave to our solicitors to look over, and our solicitors went over it and changed anything that they thought, but it's still a sample until it's passed, so that's why it says sample. Zimmerman?
Yes.
You want to do B now? Do you want to do both resolutions at the same time?
Yeah, that's what...
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution seventeen, dash, seven, dash, three, accepting the Clean Ohio grant fund.
Miller?
Yes.
Earl?
Yes.
Ewing?
Yes.
Harden?
Yes.
Knox?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Thank you. Just real quick, I know it's a topic of conversation throughout the region, as we all know that we've had a lot of rain, I think I heard about two weeks ago that we were somewhere in the neighborhood of nine inches more rain than we had this night last year, and then of course, over the last week or two, we've got continual rain, which on late Friday night, early Saturday morning, we had tremendous, I think somebody said as much as three point seven inches of rain in a short period of time, four inches, and resulted in a lot of flooding in the, in different areas throughout the town and of course, completely around the region. I'm pleased to report that we were able to maintain pumps and everything at the lift stations and keep those going, just mother nature and waiting for it, by early evening, Saturday evening, and a lot of areas had receded, things were getting more back to normal, and then of course, as of today, all the major areas that was heavily impacted on Saturday looked like they were receded to almost nothing where there was outlets to get to. So just wanted to bring that up because I'm sure it's a thought process for everybody and conversation, but I think our system worked as well as it could for the event and we can always improve it and we continually improve it, so just wanted to touch on that. And then, just so, just FYI, because since we met last time, our water and sewer license operator, Kyle Wilbermuth, had submitted his resignation and he's got other employment, and so we thanked him and was appreciative of the time he spent here and all his efforts and wished him well in his endeavors. And we have a posting out, as we always do, for those licensing, but according to EPA, they also notified me that we had a certain time window, short window of time to have a operator of record in place. So I reached out because one of our former employees, Ron Suter, is retired, has been retired since Kyle came, which was a couple of years ago, and he has a business now of consulting in different areas. And so I checked and he checked with EPA to make sure it was within the scope of, without jeopardizing his retirement, and he was able to. So I contracted with Ron to maintain our paperwork and our licensing. They gave me a, actually I had to have that in place by the 21st of this month, so we got him under contract in time, so we've kept right on going and he's got everything in place. So hopefully we'll get applicants that are licensed. If not, we'll look at all our alternatives and we'll report back to that, whether it be if we have to train within or hire within, intend to train, just whatever our options are. But initially, our hope is that we get a licensed operator.
So Ron's just temporary for right now? So Ron's just...
Yeah, Ron is just, it's just a basically a contract consultant. You know, he'll come in three days a week and do all the requirements for EPA, keep our licensing active and everything, so that is a benefit would happen, somebody knows our system too. So we kind of got started right away and without a hitch, so that's worked out well.
Luckily, the last two hires that we've had were employees that had both licenses, which is a little bit rare. I don't know if we can hit home run and get a third one or not, but that's what we're, we're hoping for, but we'll...
And, and one of our employees is already registering to start taking the classes. That's always been our plan, when we hire somebody, is to continue to build our staffing, you know, and offer training and license. Just so you know though, that is not a quick and easy fix. I mean, it usually takes about two years because you're gonna have seven or eight months of classes, testing, and then you have about seven or eight months of operator and training before you're cleared to be the operator of record. So that consultant, whoever it may be, we will probably have, unless we get a licensed operator for either water or wastewater, and we could have one and not the other. So we'll just keep you updated on what the, the status is and what the intent is, but by EPA, we don't have an option, we have to maintain an operator of record.
So is he taking, I'm thinking, classes then?
Yes, actually, he's signing up for, I think the class starts in August, so we're hopeful that, that we'll proceed and he's get that, so...
Do you ever think about getting that yourself, Fred, for backup?
Yeah, I mean, I really did, but really with the lock that we have, there's all, there's a lot to that, the time wise and time constraints, but I have, yes.
Yeah, it'd be nice, you know, because then you'd be more selective on who you're hiring.
Exactly, it does.
I know before, we've had, we had to get a guy from Indian Lake, just go up and sign the papers, you know, as long as you're operating under their license, the other guy's gonna do the work most of it.
Yeah, and that's where we're at right now. The only other thing I got, I had received a letter this, this past week from Mr. Dave Webb that I think I actually reported during the public hearing, since I'm maybe familiar with, and from, from attorney representing him, and it's a letter that he sent to me requesting to annex his property out of the village. And so I wanted to make you aware that I did send it when I got it to our attorney, so they're familiar with it, so they know what it is, but it's a petition to annex out. And, and I didn't count the, I didn't look up the exact footage, I'm gonna pass this to you, because in the application, it does have a, a page of an area of the auditor, two parcels, but just from conversation with him, he made reference to twenty-eight acres. I don't know if, the reason I'm saying that, I don't know if that's the exact number, so don't hold it to me, but yeah, that's just kind of what he said. So we're talking probably twenty-plus acres, but I want to pass this around and for your, you know, for your consideration or whatever, but if you're not aware of where it is, it's the furthest west point on the north side of sixty-seven within the village. It comes back, and then you may know Mrs. Binkley, she has a property, and you'll see that picture frame there, and it comes around, and then it comes around to his brother Brian's driveway that goes up to his property. Really large parcel of ground, but I just wanted to give that to you for your consideration, as his request. And that's all I have for you looking at that. Forty comments or conversations.
My recent, I would like to give the mayor's report, my report seventeen, nine, fifty-two dollars filed to the general fund from your court account from the month of June. We never talked about old business, we haven't any?
I do have a question. Any update on the Dollar General store, about when they might start construction?
The most recent conversation I had with him was he was holding maybe the first week of August, with the rain and everything, I think it may have affected different things in different places, but I think he said somewhere around the first week of August would be desirable, maybe be, you know, like six on the trades, I don't know. But that's all I know of this stuff.
And I see they're working again on the funeral home?
Yep, I seen some activity down there.
Yeah, so, that's good.
You want some motion on that? Or what?
Do you want, any discussion?
Up to you. How soon do you have to let him know? How soon do you have to let him know?
I don't, he did, I don't have to do anything, really, it's a request for your consideration.
What do you, we do, or...
We would have to accept that resolution to allow him to annex out. Then what happens is the trustees of the township will have to elect to accept in to township, and then, I don't know, but it was clear to the commissioners...
I think ultimately, they may sign off.
Yeah, ultimately, the commissioners have to make the decision, but they need the village's approval first.
Right. If they have the decision to be willing to let that...
Yeah.
So what's the pros and cons? I haven't, anybody got any opinions?
I, I personally don't think it would be beneficial to the village to, to do that. We want, at least I would want more people to annex in to the village than out. We did have the situation where in the last few years, we've had several annex in. We did have a property annex out that was kind of a unique situation. We weren't currently providing the proper utilities to that property, plus it was a conflict sort of with the animal ordinance, so less cost was achieved by allowing that, that one to happen.
That's the horse barn.
That's horse barn and farm, yeah. The estimated cost to do our part as far as sewer and electric was...
Well, we had electric there, we had...
Our sewer and water.
Well, we had water there too.
So it was only sewer, but that was still an enormous amount of money to get it there.
Well, we had been ramped for the gas station now.
Right.
It'd never been done.
And, and we did make that offer on that, but he thought it would have been best interest for himself and with having the horse barn and the, the whole thing, but...
He didn't really have much choice if, the way the zoning is.
But on twenty-plus acres at the end of town, a lot of road frontage, you know, maybe not in, in our lifetimes, but I do see this community, I think it will grow. I don't think we're going to be able to fizzle out, to be gone. So the more we can retain under the control of the village and I guess the way of life of living within a corporation, you know, I think it might, might have been the best interest to live it the way it is. I do know that there's other properties wanting to annex in, which would be north of town, at some... At some point, that will probably happen. I don't know how many acres that is, do you have any clue?
What's that?
North of town.
Well, if you're talking about Carter property, he has expressed in some point in time, whether before development or after, that he would want to annex in. And also, he owns another half of the state, which that's already in. But he, he has indicated that it ultimately is his desire to bring that into the village.
Well, another thing that's happening with EPA is getting very difficult for properties that abut the municipality that offers water and sewer to get granted the access to be able to put in bleach systems and wells. So that process is getting more and more difficult, because the amount of acreage we have to have for a bleach system has increased over the years.
I feel that our forefathers planted this village as it is. And I think we ought to keep all the ground that we have.
So what would you like to have, a resolution to go with it, or turn it down, or how do we feel about this?
You can do, you can do that, or you can do nothing.
It's my, it's my understanding that if, if it was to be allowed, or if the council wanted to pass it, it would have to be passed just like any other, it can have to be an order. If ordinance is not a resolution, you have to ask like any other, other ordinance, they have to be hearings, and then a vote, yea or nay, or there would have to be, you know, an emergency vote, and then vote the ordinance up or down. Or you could simply vote not to have a reading and table it, and it would die.
I'll make a motion, just table this, for right now.
I guess that makes me understand why the man would want to annex out. I guess he should have been here.
I don't quite understand that statement.
Well, it just seems like we're all concerned about what we, as a village, can gain from his property being in here, rather than, you know, what we can do for him. He said here at that meeting, he better, he felt he was better served by the trustees. I do remember him saying that.
I also remember him saying he wanted to have farm animals on that 24 acres within the corporation.
It is a farm, right?
It's agricultural, but that does not mean it's for farm.